Well, good evening. Welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting on September 22, 2022. And I would ask you all to stand and shoot. If you'd leave us, please, in the front.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, before we get going in terms of our planned agenda for this evening, I would ask you, please, to take a moment. I would like a moment of silence because on Tuesday, this past Tuesday, Peter Bowers, who has served the village for a long time and was a member of the board, zoning board, passed away pretty unexpectedly because none of us were aware of any particular illness. There will be a viewing on Saturday at the Village Scott Funeral Home from 2:00 to 4:00 and also 6:00 to 8:00. So if you would, at this time, please, let's take a moment, please, of silence. Thank you. It was, as I said, quite unexpected. There is a card that is being passed around to the board members. And if you feel free to sign. All right. At this time, we will now move to our regular scheduled agenda. And our first order tonight of business is we have a presentation. The town assessor, Donna Camore, is here. And she will be talking to us regarding the local option to adjust income limits for certain expenses. I believe we all have the handout that she sent looking at the two exemptions. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, Donna.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to answer any questions that you might have. There are many exemptions that are mandated by New York State, and then there are some that are a local option. And you have the opportunity to set some limits that would be appropriate for your particular residence. It's not the same level mandated across the state. So I'm here tonight to explain to you two different programs for which the state has now given a new opportunity for you to raise the income limits. They're income-related. So those two programs are limited income senior citizen exemption, which is not the STAR program. This is the original senior exemption, and the disabled persons with limited income. I wanted to start with just a short summary of what those two programs are for anyone that's viewing or listening in here tonight that doesn't know what the programs are. So briefly, as you follow through my slides, you'll see here are the highlights. The 467 is the limited income senior citizen program. It's the original senior exemption. And it is applicable to the primary residents only. After that, it's based on age and is based on income. The age has to be 65 years or over by December 31 of the year that we would be taking the applications. The applications are due earlier in the year. So I always encourage people not to wait until their 65th birthday that come in and apply the year that they'll be turning 65. If the owners are married or siblings, as defined in the law, then only one must be age-eligible. Otherwise, all the owners must meet that income or that age limit. And then the income is based on a various sliding scale, which we're going to get into in depth in a little bit. On the next slide, you'll see the highlights for the 459C program, which is disabled persons with limited income. It's similar in the sense that it is applicable to their primary residents only. But instead of being based on age, it is based on documented physical or mental disability, which would affect one or more of the major life activities for the applicant. Each property owner must qualify. And if the owners are married or siblings, as defined in the law, then one of them must be eligible. Otherwise, all the owners must qualify. And it's also based on income. We would know that they're disabled because they will be receiving social security disability insurance or other types of disability pensions. And there are various levels. On the next slide, you'll see the other ways that these two programs are similar is that for both of the programs, the applications are renewable annually, and they are processed manually by our staff. We are looking at their continuation of their qualification. Obviously, no one will get younger, but you might get better. And your income is always subject to change. So every year, we are looking at this program. So depending on the incomes that are set forth by each taxing jurisdiction, the application for the school, the town, the county, and the village taxes are looked at independently on that one application through our office. And those limits are subject to change. And that's why we're here today. So I wanted to give you some statistics to help you in your decision because my job is just to make you aware of that, to answer any questions you have about the program. But you have to make the difficult decision to decide whether you set that income limitation and how that fits your community best. So on the next slide, you will see that there are the current statistics for the village of Webster. So this is outside the town, strictly inside the village. We have 42 approved applications for village benefits for the limited income senior citizen exemption out of 624 that we have taken in in the roll year for 2022. It amounts to $1,735,810 aggregate assessment dollars that are being exempted. Or those are exemption is where the taxpayer is not paying that amount. That amounts to about $3,784 of tax savings on the village tax line. Or another way to say that is $3,784 of village taxes paid by your other taxpayers. Because exemptions are a discount to the individual property owner, not a discount to the taxing jurisdiction. It's a zero-sum game. You won't lose any money. But you will be shifting the money not collected by one group of people to the other group of people. Does that make sense? Okay. For the disabled persons with limited income, you have two approved applications within your village limits. That's $90,530 of aggregate assessment that is being exempted, about $197 worth of taxes. So that's the background on the programs and where you stand. Your opportunity and objective is to set that income limit of the 50% mark. You can set it between $3,000, which is the state minimum, or the new state maximum of $50,000. Then there's a sliding scale that goes up from there in incremental fashion by 5% changes. So the 50% is obviously the best benefit. But for people who are a little over that 50% mark that you set, they may get 45% benefit. And so on and so on, up to 5% benefit until people just don't qualify. The village board is the authority to decide the appropriate level. Your task is to define what is limited income for your community. You have three options available to you. You can do nothing, which means that the income sliding scale that you have decided on in the past, maybe not this board, but as a board, would remain. You can lower it, or you could raise it. Some of those choices are obviously better than others. So some statistics about your community. On the next slide, you'll see the Census Bureau estimates as of July 1, 2021, which I gathered for your review. Your population is 4,758. 18.7% of them are over 65. 11.5% of your residents are disabled under the age of 65. 40.1% of any age, you have owner-occupied housing. So keep in mind that these applications are only for owner-occupied seniors and owner-occupied disabled. They're not available to the renters. Your median household, I'm sorry, your households are 2,915, according to the Census Bureau. And your median household income, which does include ages 15 and up, they did include teenagers with their first job. So this might be slightly understated. I can't tell you by how much. I just saw a footnote on that, and I thought it noteworthy. Your median household income is $56,212. Your per capita income is $33,458. And your poverty level is 12.6. This does not reflect homeowners. It reflects all of your residents because the Census Bureau was counting residents in your jurisdiction. Any questions so far? The next scale is an example of the sliding scale, the existing versus the new maximum option. On the left side is the town and the village. Our income limits do match right now. This is our sliding scale, which was adopted in 2010. Currently, if someone is receiving $26,000 or less in income as defined by the New York State Real Property Tax Law, not defined by the IRS and on their income tax return, not everyone files an income tax return. We use the New York State Real Property Tax Law definition of income. So we reconstruct all of those. That's why I say we process these applications manually. $26,000 or less, a person will receive a 50% benefit, a 50% discount on their tax bill. All the way up through, and you can see how it gradually changes. 5%, the upper limit, is $34,400. If someone is making $34,400 or more, they would not qualify for these benefits as a senior citizen or as a disabled limited income person. You can see on the right-hand side, then, how that compares to the new state maximum. And I would just call your attention, then, to the fact that the current state maximum before this new option came into play is $29,000. So you were not yet at the state maximum. Potential reasons for the increase is that it has been 13 years since the state was given the opportunity for any jurisdiction to increase their income limits for these two programs and that inflation, inflation certainly, as we all know in our own shopping adventures, we're finding that it's hitting our pockets. And I would suggest to you, while it's a good idea to review these income limits from time to time and $50,000 is being offered, you have to decide what's best for your whole community. Everyone is being affected by inflation. So I've given you some information that you can look at when you're trying to make the decision. I am available for any questions that you might have about the programs. I can't give you legal advice, but I do know that you do need to hold public hearings. Any questions on the sliding scale? Or move on? A change in the income level will definitely increase the number of new applicants, including the residents that already received benefits. They will be receiving more benefits. They will raise the benefits for all the existing applicants. I cannot predict the taxable value changes or that shift that we talked about that would shift from one side of your community members to the other. And it will not affect any existing applications. You will need to make a decision before March 1, but I strongly encourage you to make a decision as soon as you are able because we cannot process any applications. We will certainly try to take them and give our best advice. But at this point, our office cannot advise our constituents as to what the income limit maximum is. So we will just be taking any and all applications, which means some applicants are wasting their time. And so are we in processing them if we can't properly advise them before it comes in. If you wait till March 1, that's also the deadline to take the applications. And then basically, what you're asking us to do is hold up all of our work to the end. And since we could potentially see a doubling or tripling of our applications, we're not staffed for that. And so I'm here as early as this came out to encourage you to make an early decision. But I'm not here to rush you. Because they are separate and distinct, New York State Real Property Tax Laws, you will need to do a separate and distinct local law and a public hearing to change the local law. You already have those local laws, and you can't have one public hearing or one resolution that would change both at the same time. I've also prepared for you, since I did my presentation to the town board, this one thing is different, and I'll be taking this back to them. I've already given this to the supervisor. But the separate handout, which has the chart on it that looks like this, is I had some advice from a person with some banking background, which was very helpful, and found the information through his advice that the cost of living increase that has been issued by the federal government for social security, which is generally the main source of income for many of the people in our applications, and what the cost of living has been each of those years. I turned it into a compound interest multiplier factor. And when you read the chart, what I hope that you will notice is that in 2010, when you last decided what, you had the opportunity to decide what the income limit should be, a dollar was a dollar. And now, when you come up to 2021, you need a dollar 25 to still have the same buying power as that dollar. Another way to say it is there's been a 25% increase in the cost of living that's been issued to these applicants. That helps to explain why each year we see fewer people in the program because the people that are at the upper end of the program are being eliminated from the program as their social security has increased. So down, I made two boxes. You can see that the village limit of 50% exemption, because that's the number you've set, and all the other pieces fall in place after that by statute. You currently have $26,000, which was established in 2010. And if you apply an inflation rate to that, for example, for your consideration, if you just wanted to move that by 25%, you would move that up to somewhere around $32,400. That would put the top end of your exemption at $42,886. The math would just come into play. You decided that 50% number would be, I just applied my math to this without rounding. Compare that to the state's prior maximum of $29,000. The top end was $37,400. And if you apply a 25% inflation rate to that, it would be $36,100 up to 46,600. Compare both of those to the new state maximum that's before you today of $50,000 to $58,400. There are working families who would fall in any of these categories. But they're not 65, and I can't approve their application. So that is my study of the inflation rate. And that is my brief presentation of two very complicated exemptions. I hope it was enough for you to understand a little bit about how important the programs are to some of your constituents and what is the decision that's before you today. Can I answer any questions for you?
The change in terms of the income, the inflation, applied to the old and whatever it is, the new, for example, the $26,320, and for this, it was $34,420. My question. That is just for the rate of inflation, correct?
Correct. So I took the study that I did, saying that there's approximately a 25% rate of inflation from the last time you visited, and I applied it to the current scale just to say, well, where would you be if you just wanted to keep pace with inflation? That may be the best decision. It may not be the best decision. You have a lot on your plate to decide that. I also took the liberty of taking that $42,000 number and dividing it by a 40-hour work week. If someone is working 40 hours a week as a family person, the $42,800 translates to roughly $19.60 an hour. It's a generous wage.
So looking at this, the state has just increased it above the, their maximums, just above the rate of inflation. So instead of the 46, they've gone to 50.
Correct. Instead of 36, they've gone to 50, yes. So their previous is in the blue. Yeah, the previous state maximum is in the blue, and that would be $36,100 as a rate of inflation against the 29 that was. So you'd be looking at the 36 would be a catch-up for inflation. They've gone just beyond that. And I might add, too, that the $50,000 limit that you're seeing now for upstate has already been in place for downstate because downstate has a whole different economy. And so, you know, their poverty level is very different. Their same jobs there, their same houses are much more expensive. So what they're doing by changing this law, the way that they have changed it, is now taking the two income limits and combining it. The rest of the state just caught up with the limit that has been in effect for the downstate area, New York City. We might not be in New York City. I can't tell you that $50,000 is correct for New York City. I didn't do that study, you know. But what I wanted to do was to give you some points of reference so that you were making a decision based on facts.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
A couple. The income limits of those individuals are household?
Household to the applicants.
Okay.
I think it's a little tricky. Sometimes there's extra people in the house.
So just the applicants, just the people that are over 65? If there are four people and two were over 65, their household and their income would be combined to be that one?
Well, this is the part where I say I oversimplified complicated exemptions. So I can answer that question, but I think we'll go on the weeds really quickly. So if you have a married couple that are senior citizens, they are the applicant as long as they are also the owners. I can give you a couple of different scenarios. If mom and dad and son and daughter-in-law all own the house, all owners may not be 65, so the household may not qualify at all. But if they've set up their deed so that mom and dad own it and in a temporary way, son and daughter-in-law are living with mom and dad, okay, then they have to show us as a temporary situation. And we will be asking about the contributions to the household, which becomes income then to mom and dad. Like I said, it's not the law that goes out for your income taxes. It is truly a program in a very old-fashioned sense. This income definition hasn't changed in many years. Our ways and means that have become available to us to save for our retirement has dramatically changed since this program was first instituted in 1966. So it is truly based on need. If you think of the original social helpful programs as we're helping neighbors, helping neighbors through our government programs, this is that program. We ask a lot of questions and look at a lot of different resources. So they would want to make sure that their deed is structured properly. And we would be asking a lot of questions about the contributions for the son and daughter-in-law in that home, but not looking at the income of the son and daughter-in-law. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Unless they're all 65 and they all own it, that's a different story.
I think you've already answered the other question I asked. I know as part of the state plan, a lot of times people will put their home in trust. And the trust doesn't have income, probably, but the owners, that probably are a little crazy trying to figure it out as well.
Yes, in that case, the property may very well still qualify. It depends on how their trust is written. Because then the persons who benefit from the real estate that is held by that trust is what we're looking at. They would be the applicant.
Are there any other? I don't know. I'm not in the board. The board had any other questions?
As town and village taxpayers, where do we fall? In village only or town and village?
I am giving a presentation to the village board because the village needs to make a decision on what their income limit would be, which would affect their tax rate because of that shift. So you, as a town and village resident, you're also a county resident, and you also live in a school district. So that one application would be looked at four ways in our office to make a determination based on all four of those jurisdictions' income limits.
Thank you.
We're never bored. And we love what we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity. I know you have a lot on your plate to think through. And if you have any questions, you know where to reach me. I'll be very happy to help you through as best I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Have a good night. You, too.
Heather, take note of that. For the next workshop, we'll put that on the agenda for discussion. And we'll pass this along to Donna and also have a discussion with Marsha. Donna, before you go, I guess I would have one question. If we were to make a change regarding that, based on, okay, the scale, would we have access through your office as to, you wouldn't know this possibly, what the additional numbers would be?
I wouldn't know because by raising the income scale, you would be opening up to people for whom I don't have an application yet. So I couldn't study that. And I forget the number that I just read to you, but, you know, the number of applicants that you have are all over that scale. So I would have to go through and pull them out and look at it as if it had changed. It'd be quite a process. But you could kind of assume a certain amount about the existing applications. If you move it by 10%, we could make a 10% shift in that amount, right? Yeah. But you can't count the people that would be coming into the program, which is really, you know, the ones you would be trying to reach.
Correct. Thank you. At this time, then, we will move to a public commentary portion of the meeting. And if there is anyone we'd like to address for this evening, welcome to yourself and up to the podium. Say your name.
I hope you're doing well tonight. Peter Elder, 59 Downing Avenue. I was just coming up here to say, first, I couldn't be here last month for your meetings, but I wanted to make sure I caught up with what the Historic Preservation Commission has been doing. We were honored to do two sites of the month, the last two months. The first one we did was for the Department of Public Works, believe it or not. And we're very happy to do that. Just a quick sketch of what that was about. We were honoring the Department of Public Works because it has been around since 1905, when the village was formed. So it certainly qualifies in terms of time. But also, many of the structures in the back, behind Village Hall, are actually well over 60 years old. The block building, we're not even sure exactly how old that is. But we do know that there was an expansion made in 1978. If you walk into the door, that gets you into the area where Jake works, you'll see that on the wall to your left, there's a plaque for 1978 that talks about the expansion there. And Mayor John Bill... And Mayor John Bill was the mayor then. So there is, so we do know some things about what happened, but there's surprisingly little documentation in Esther Dunn's book about the Village DPW. I did, however, find one interesting reference that one of the first projects the Village DPW did was the sidewalks on Main Street. So nineteen oh six, so within a year, they were already planning and executing sidewalks on Main Street. So, and from that point on, that's one of the functions of the DPW, as I know you're all aware, as they put in miles, I think, at this point, on sidewalks throughout the village. So that was a really great thing to do. We're happy to honor them with that. And we got a great picture of all the guys, which also is one of the things that's kind of neat because you can see changes of the DPW staff throughout the year. I myself have been honored to know Dave Galliasso, Bill Southall, and Jake are the people I've known from the, have been superintendent of Public Works throughout time. But also, I really don't know a lot of the superintendents before them. But Lynn Barton did give me a really dense file folder of little tiny cards that are all the village offices going back to the beginning. So I'm trying to scan them in, I'm not sure, but eventually I will have some kind of, you know, lineage of all the different employees that the village has had. So it's been a, but it's really, it's really a good thing to recognize. And then the next month, we recognized the cold storage building, the self-storage building down on North Avenue, and it's owned by Dimitri Stefano right now. That building also has a very interesting history, and you'll see the sign in front of her right now. It was actually built in nineteen twenty-three. And I'm going to give you some names here of the people who worked together to build it. Louis Kittleberger, George Hosenfeld, William Stokes, George Dunn, Earl Wright, all names that you'll see pop up at that time in the era of the village. Believe it or not, that storage space provided for fifty thousand barrels of apples and approximately four hundred thousand cubic feet of space in about thirty-two degrees temperature. First year it said it was kind of slow, but then things started picking up by nineteen forty-four, nineteen forty-three, forty-four. But I did note that in the book, Esther Dunn's book, it says in nineteen thirty and thirty-one, the cherry picking and apple cooperative, they went out of business, but then consolidation was made with Fairport Cold Storage, and then it continued on. So they did actually have some interesting times where they actually looked at how they could actually package cold storage. In one instance, they had an experiment that about nineteen twenty-five, that they tried to figure out how to better freeze cherries, and it was one of the first times that it happened in the entire United States. The, about nineteen forty-five, they had, could handle six thousand tons of frozen fruit, vegetables, and seafood. And in nineteen forty-seven, they could actually store seven hundred tons of cherries, one hundred and sixty tons of apples, one hundred and forty tons of grapes, two hundred and ten tons of peaches, and two hundred and twenty-five tons of prunes. That's a lot of fruit. So there's also an additional twenty-four thousand bushels of capacity for apples and even carrots. So the building continued in that operation until about nineteen sixty-five. By that time, it had kind of gone down out of business. Xerox rented it, and then from there, as I recall, it was kind of not used a lot when I was, when I was younger. And now, of course, it's been picked up by Dimitri and it's been fabulously redone. He has a lot of storage units in there, and he has lofts in the top, and they are beautiful. We were given a tour. I'm sure if you guys asked me, I'd give you a tour. And they are, but they are really nice and great views of the village, by the way, because you're getting pretty high up there, and you can see that section, the north section of the village. So those were our two sites of the month, I just wanted to make sure about. The other thing is, we are looking for new members. For those of you out there who are interested in historic preservation, we're losing members. We want to replace people and have other people on there that can, that want to participate in the historical, you know, the history of the village. We want to look at structures, but we're not really just structures. We're also talking about people, programs, Main Street, North Avenue, South Avenue. So if you have a variety of interests, if you like architecture, then we're the place for you. So either give me a call, call the mayor, call Village Hall, we'll get you on board and have you working with that. We do have a lot of great programs that we do. We're looking on a walking tour for the fall right now, and your ideas are welcome, so really are. Similarly, just as a small switch of gears, we're also looking for new members for the Parks Committee. So if you like our parks, we'd love to have you involved in that as well. Another good call, the mayor and myself, we can get you involved in that as well. And I know I've been taking a little bit of time, but the other thing I just wanted to do is in October, the bid has some events coming up. We have a Beer Walk and Oktoberfest on October fifteenth, and of course, the Trick or Treat Trail is coming up on the twenty-ninth. So take a look at the bid website, a lot of great events happening in the fall. And then, of course, in December, we have a White Christmas event, so we'll keep you updated about that. So, all right. But anyways, thank you. Just wanted to make sure you're updated about what we're doing.
Thank you. It was very interesting, everybody would stroll through Village Hall, the hallway, and look at the maps that are there.
They're awesome.
The maps of eighteen eighty or eighteen, the four fountains that are at the intersection of North Avenue, South Avenue, and Main Street, which must have been a source in the village for water.
Yes.
Very, very interesting.
People would stop and actually use them. Some of those, we can't really, we don't really know where a lot of those are. One was actually put in by the Women's Tempurts Movement. I have a picture of it. Lynn gave it to me, and it just sort of disappeared, but it's got a great story. It's been, it's got a great breakup. I'll share that with you sometime. But yeah, you're absolutely right. It was, they had to have water, so the Four Corners was great. So you may not realize it, but there are aquifer maps, and just a little bit to the north of where this room is, there is an aquifer underneath Ridge Road. So you can sink the well there. What'll happen is though, it'll probably end up being a little salty, you'd have to go through a salt layer first, but there is absolutely one there to have the map of that aquifer. So, expensive to sink the well.
The incorporation of nineteen oh five Webster Village area was busy long before that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The village was busy right from the get-go. I mean, the coach was one of the first structures. I know that Norm Bruson's house, I can't recall who lives there right now, Jerry?
Jerry Spronk.
It's Jerry Spronk, right? Thank you. The, is that, that house is really old. The rumors are that it's so old that it's front and it's back. We haven't been able to quite prove that yet, but it might be that there was a driveway, a very long one that went up to State Road. So it's not clear, but that is a very, very old house. So, but if you came here in eighteen twenty, you'd see just scattered buildings around, but you would see some of them that you'd almost recognize. So you would.
You'd be in Ontario County, though.
You would be in Ontario County, though. You'd be paying taxes to have replaced. And different exemptions, I'm sure, so. All right, well, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then at this time, I propose a public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move to our regularly scheduled agenda. First item tonight is a resolution to approve the minutes from our September eighth meeting. You have them in front of you. If there are, you know, changes, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Next, we have a motion to, a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. You have them in front of you. I look them over. The head of the conference. Give them a moment to look at it, and then we'll entertain the motion to approve. Should there be any questions.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, a resolution to adopt Seeker and proposed law, local law number eight of two thousand and twenty-two, entitled, "Amending the Village's Zoning Ordinance," Chapter one seventy-five of the Code of the Village of Webster, to correct an error that occurred when the local law to enlarge the size of the allowed accessory buildings was adopted. And in front of you, this seeker. Proposed action to adopt the proposed local law, number eight of two thousand twenty-two, is classified as a type-two action under New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and by definition, is deemed to not have significant impact on the environment and is otherwise precluded from environmental review under the Environmental Conservation Law. Motion to adopt the seeker.
I'll make that motion. One second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And following that then, we have, next, a resolution to adopt proposed local law, number eight of two thousand and twenty-two, of the Village of Webster, titled, "Technical Correction to the Accessory Building and Zoning Board of Appeals Procedures Local Law of Twenty Twenty." And in here, we are looking at, this is a type-two action, we're looking at the following. Section one, the local law shall be known as the Technical Correction to the Accessory Building and Zoning Board of Appeals Procedures Local Law of Twenty Twenty. Section two, Chapter one seventy-five of the Code of the Village of Webster, shall be amended by amending Section one seventy-five dash fifty-nine A to add at the end, "In any district, no detached garage or accessory building shall be placed closer to the side or rear property line than five feet." Section three, Chapter one seventy-five of the Code of the Village of Webster, shall be amended by deleting the following sentence. "In all residential zones, no garage shall be more than six hundred square feet in area, and no accessory building shall be more than one hundred square feet in area." Section four, this local law shall take effect twenty days after it is filed in the law, in the office, excuse me, of the Secretary of State, as provided in Section twenty-seven of the Municipal Home Rule Law. So I may have a resolution to adopt this proposed amendment.
I'll make that motion. Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next, we have budget modifications and transfers. This deals specifically with the general fund budget modification to reclass loader lease payments as reduction in installment purchase debt. We are moving from AA fifty-one-ten-point-two-hundred equipment line, forty thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, to AA ninety-seven-eight-five-six-hundred installment purchase debt principal of thirty-seven-two-hundred-and-two dollars, thirty-seven thousand two hundred and two dollars. And also to line AA ninety-seven-eight-five-seven-hundred installment purchase debt interest of three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, which totals for forty thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight. So I guess we just need to kind of note that. Okay, I don't think we need to vote on that.
Yeah, you do.
We do, and we will. And I have a motion to move and adopt the general fund budget modification as of right.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the final acceptance letter for the master lease purchase agreement of the VACON truck. That lease agreement totaled thirty, three hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. And I think we basically have already noted that, but we're looking just for formal approval of that at this point. So do I have a motion to authorize my signature to go on the state's agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a motion, a resolution, I guess, to adopt a seeker resolution. The intent is to declare the lead agency status and authorize the village mayor to sign the full environmental act assessment form. The proposed action here in terms of, this is an unlisted action under seeker, village has received clean water state revolving fund, funding for the project, which requires state environmental review process compliance. So be it resolved that in accordance with seeker, the village board intends to serve as lead agency to conduct an environmental review of the Village of Webster wastewater treatment plant improvements projects pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Act. And so, further resolved, the village board will notify the involved and interested agencies of its intention to act as the lead agency for this project, and has provided them with a copy of the completed Part One of the full EAF or review. I may have a motion to approve the seeker resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Finally, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the Village of Webster insurance policy with the Smith Insurance Agency, Zurich, totaling sixty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents. You have the itemization of the package in front of you. There is a total in terms of this package of fifty thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, the basic annual premium, and then there are additional items, three of them, public officials liability, the owners and contractors protective, and the umbrella policy, which gives us the total. There is basically reason for the increase from the total last year, which was forty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars in terms of the annual package, to fifty thousand five hundred and ninety-one, is because of the inflation percentage that they included in this. There's really no change on the letter in terms of policy. I may have a motion to authorize myself to sign this.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
At this particular time then, Don is not here this evening. I believe that he has a fever. I mean, he has issues going along, but we miss him. I wish him speedy recovery.
You don't say that.
We don't say that. Hey, I say that, maybe you don't, but I do.
I made that motion.
So I can, right? So we will move on from there. So next, we have, gentlemen, we haven't seen in a while, but it's good to see you here this evening, our enforcement officer, Aaron. What do you have for us?
Aaron. Nice to meet you. Hello.
Yes, I apologize for missing last month. I was on vacation with my kids. So for permits for the last, this is going to be for the last two months for the report. Total of forty-one permits, fifteen plus, I guarantee that number is off, but violations and complaints. Legal, as you already gone over, approved one tonight. We're changing several local laws, and there's still several more to come, especially after this last zoning board meeting. There were several, and Carl was there, so he can attest to board meeting and everything else. Certificate of Occupancies issued were three. Certificate of, man, I need my glasses, man.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Compliance, I missed that one. Yeah, compliance. Total of thirty-nine closed-up permits. Green Rider Crossing is doing site work for phase two now, and will open a portion of those for sale in the near future. Five units have a temporary CVO on them, and some of them are occupied or will be close to it within the next week or two. Several buildings that are in the process of being built are sold already, with the exception of just a few in the first phase that are not sold, and one of them is just being a model. So they're still selling quickly. The Donovan Park Flex Base is, has been terminated by the applicant, by the applicant, and withdrawn all of his paperwork and applications and the offer on the property. I have already had a call from another interested individual, so we'll see where that one goes for that. Xerox, I have not heard from the owners of that yet, but we have had some noise complaints, actually several, to be honest with you, but they are working on it, they're aware of it. They're just waiting for some parts, for some machinery, machinery, so they're well aware of it, and they do apologize for it, but it's kind of out of their control until they get these parts, and we know.
Is it a big fan that's over in Saltwood?
I believe that's what it is, right, Jake?
I'm not sure. You know, they were discussing their handling unit, dump work for that that needed to be shipped in there.
Yeah, so they are working on that stuff. So as you can see by the permits, there's a lot of projects going on, several open permits and work being done. One thing I added on that's not in the report for you folks is, we had an issue with the codes program, so that's missing about thirty permits. This is all for Green Rider Crossing. So Donna, I actually have to update you on this as well, so we'll meet with you on it. Some of the paperwork the county just didn't get in, so some of it was just missed. So we have to add on some of the permits. It actually mostly affects Donna, but so my numbers are kind of off for the last several months because we're adding about thirty permits total for the past last six months. So other than that, if there's any questions, concerns, just let me know. I'd be more than happy to help.
So there are five units that have a certificate of occupancy there at Green Rider?
Yes. They, well, they all currently only have temporary CVOs, but yes. Because they just have a few minor things to do, like they got finished grading and succeeding and something like that. Other than that, it's all set down.
Moving right along.
Yep, yeah.
Do we know anything about the Donovan Park Flex Space? Owner, they're pulled out, I believe.
Yeah.
The one who was there with nine buildings, he proposed that to the planning board. I believe that there might possibly be someone else who's interested.
Yeah, like I said, we have had another call. They haven't told us what it is yet, but we'll see. It's unfortunate to see the other gentleman stuff call out because they, you know, got all approvals, they were ready to go. Spent a lot of money on engineering and everything else, but.
So you're going to do it? It happens?
Yeah, absolutely.
It happens. Very good. Anything else that you might add from Aaron?
I was asking, how we doing the country manor?
Yeah. Country manor's still, still coming along. Haven't had, the only complaints I've had from there are just the rent increases. So it's, you know, it's good because that doesn't affect us. Yeah, they're still doing what they're supposed to be. Still some condemned units that they got to take care of, but so far, they're well up there in the bargain.
Any movement on the law office, sure?
No, we've had a lot of different people calling to ask what they could do there, and it's nothing yet. There's actually several, I think, three or four different storefronts that are open. It's just a matter of those businesses, whether they'll fit in those spaces and the landlords or owners want to allow it. Because some of them don't want to cut holes in the sides for venting and stuff like that, so.
Oh, one other thing, how about the old church mall?
Yeah, I've not heard anything from them, actually. I did try putting a call on them just the other day because we haven't heard anything from them in a while. Have not gotten any calls back, so curious, yeah, curious to see what's going on with that because he was working hard on what he had to do. You know, we got the structural engineers report, and there's just been no movement on it lately. You know, the other half, the west, the west wing of it's, you know, still with Maria's and, you know, a few other businesses in it, they're still, they're still up around and going, but nothing on the actual church part, so hopefully I'll have an update for you on that next month. Because I'd like to get that one taken care of.
It would be, it would also be important, I think, in terms of, this is a great opportunity as we are applying for the grant.
Yes.
You know, if he has no interest in moving out the building, it's not going to be helpful.
Right.
He would. That would be a nice key point. So we'll see what happens. All right, thank you, Aaron. Okay. Moving to my right, anything from the Parks Office?
No.
Parks Office, no? The staff is a little bit low. Donna is fighting something, and Joe is off this week, so.
I did get a lot of information at night, and it was really, really great. And I met somebody that was from, wow, thank you. A grant writer that is from, he's a retired Arundecoy Police Officer, and he, his business is in, in support, in federal support. And he would love to come out and talk to Jake and Daryl and myself and Marsha and see if there's things that we might be able to report that we might not know. So speak to me for that. She's good.
Okay.
She likes Marsha better than Peter was curious.
Jake, tell us about what's happening in DPW and SURE.
DPW, we're getting, you know, projects wrapped up for this year, our summertime. All nine projects here are prepping for leaves and the dirty S word, snow. And fresh pickupers and reminders, the first full weekend of every month, so doing that on October third. And SURE, we continue to be, regardless of the project. In fact, in the last week, I've had several meetings and Zoom meetings and things, and conference calls, and we're getting some final details as they're progressing to final design. So there's going to be more information on that coming. It was related to the substance receiving and the trickling filter and the sizing and design loads, and we had really good, really good conversations and a lot of work back and forth. And I think we, I think it's all figured out now, so that should be progressing forward. They've got good information, and there's a lot of data that they go through, so. That's about it. And, oh, back to the DPW part, the wells, the sandbar wells. As you know, it's part of the ready grant. The pavement's all done, the five well houses are down. We were able to get in contact with R G D to mitigate some of the hazard with the overhead power lines there, so they freed up the well driller, the well company. And once they're going to decommission it, hopefully, we're going to see them on site next week. They couldn't really schedule themselves until R G D, and that's always kind of difficult on your R G D schedule, but we were able to get in touch with the right people, and they were very responsive, got right out there and took care of it. So we're thankful for that, and should be, we'll come on that really fast and get everybody up.
It's been quite a, quite a while.
Yes. Yes, it sounds good.
Okay, well, our next, anybody else have anything for the order? I'll announce that our next meeting, to a board meeting, will be October thirteenth at seven thirty, excuse me, seven o'clock. And. Another year older. Deeper in debt. Unfortunately, not able to avail myself of the opportunity of the money that's available out there or the percentage off. I hope that we will have a good discussion at our next workshop on the possible increase in, or change, I guess, in the amount of the current exemptions.
Did you want to do that on the fourth?
Pardon?
Did you want to do that on the fourth, October fourth?
Sure. If we have the opportunity to do that. I don't want to put it off until November.
I'll send an email out to see if that works for everybody.
That would be early. People couldn't.
Yeah, six o'clock. It's not twenty-fifth? I'll send an email out to see if it works better for everybody.
The earlier it is, the better.
All righty.
I can't make that.
So it's Monday?
It'd be all right.
I'll send an email out and see if everybody wants, check their calendars. All righty.
All right, well, if nothing else on the agenda for this evening, as we go to the order, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, and thank you all for coming and watching. So I have a motion.
I'll make it. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carries. All right. Good evening.
Good coverage, that. Well, we all set our eyes, so there's no reason to ask.